The May tenth, two thousand and ten final commission hearing. And first of all, I'll ask for a couple of comments for any items out of this. We're not seeing any of those moved into adoption of the final commission hearings for the March twenty second, two thousand and ten. Um, that was not a question. We could have a discussion after.
She did not have a copy of the message. Here there. So I have actually read the minutes of the March twenty second meeting. I move to approve that.
Since uh.
Are we gonna be able?
No, I think we'll probably have to postpone this.
Correct.
Kidwell.
We don't have a form to approve this.
So we'll hold those over to the next planning commission and bring those forward.
Very good.
And on that note, um, let's back up and welcome Commissioner Charles Kidwell, taking Commissioner Dunce's seat. Um, so we did meet with Mr. Kidwell, the mayor, and Commissioner Sheriff Powell, and had some discussions and got to know him a little bit, and so just like to welcome him to the commission.
Welcome to the commission, Kidwell.
Okay. And you know you're filling the seat of a former teacher who caught all of our grammatical.
Okay, so um, we're gonna hold over the approval of our March twenty second, uh, twenty second round. So we'll move into the commission hearing for additional use permit, CU ten dash O two, for Oregon City Farmers. All right, you're willing to move on to the next meeting.
If I could before Laura, does that could I do my eagle logo jumbo please? Uh, the notice for CU one zero O two has been mailed and the notice lists all the applicable approval criteria. I believe that a copy of the staff report is available online and it also lists the applicable approval criteria. Uh, testimony presented today, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the criteria identified in the notice and the staff report. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to this issue precludes appeal to the county court appeal based on that issue. In addition, uh, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its dozen need to respond to the issue at this hearing precludes an action for damages in circuit court. This time I would ask the commission if they have any extracurricular contacts via some conflict of interest that they need wish to declare.
I will declare um, that um, I know Jackie Hammond Williams. Um, she's in uh, Park Place Neighborhood Association as am I. Um, and the Park Place Neighborhood Association newsletter does uh, uh, put in a flyer for the farmer's market on, on, on a regular basis. Um, I've attended the uh, uh, the farmer's market up on the hill and also attended the farmer's market this past holiday season. Um, and I have also been volunteering for Main Street Oregon City and have um, uh, been involved in, not been involved in, but have witnessed conversations where Main Street Oregon City people talk about farmer's market. I don't, I don't have any bias one way or the other um, uh, with regards to that and I have no uh, no uh, real or potential conflict of interest. Um, I'm able to make a decision um, in this matter without, without bias and I'm happy to uh, answer any questions from the commissioners or the audience about that.
None from.
Any none? Anybody else?
I have been to the farmer's market and have no bias of it, or at all.
All right, Laura, it's all yours. Good evening, my name is Laura Butler, I'm a Cisco planner here at the city of Oregon City. There'll be a PowerPoint behind you if you wanna view it on your screen, there's a silver toggle switch, you can go back and forth. Um, I'm here to present CU conditional use file CU ten O two, which is a conditional use application to the Oregon City Farmer's Market. As you know, there's an existing farmer's market that operates on Saturdays up here on the hilltop. This proposal would be to add an additional farmer's market in downtown Oregon City that was operating on Wednesdays from three till seven P M between the months of May and October. So, the location of the farmer's market is gonna be on Eighth Street in downtown Oregon City. It's actually the location of the original produce market in Oregon City in the late twenties. Um, there's also two additional locations on, posted on this map. First would be a vendor staging area, so that would be the location for all the vendors, parkers, trucks and trailers and whatnot, it's gonna be that gravel parking lot over on the intersection of twelfth and main. And although the farmer's market encourages their customers to walk to the market by their bikes in the market, take transit to the market, if they do choose to drive, they can park anywhere along Main Street or in any public driveway. Or also highlighted on this map is our Oregon City park, public parking lot over on thirteenth and main street. So if they do park in the public parking lot, they'll have to pay fees if these are required at the time that they're there to park as well. So let's take a closer look at the actual side of the farmer's market itself. So the farmer's market is proposed to set up tents adjacent to the sidewalk, they'll be facing inward towards the middle of the street. And then that'll maintain open access along the sidewalks and entry into buildings and things like that as well. The farmer's market noted that they'll maintain at least twenty feet between um, the vendors in the middle of the street, so then if there's any sort of need for fire access or whatnot, that can uh, be obtained as well. So this is the farmer's market site, this would be the maximum area that they would be able to use with this conditional use. If they wanted to expand beyond this red hatched area, then they'll have to come back for an additional conditional use. Uh, if they wanna use just a portion of this site and then maybe grow over time to use that whole area, they can do that as well. Um, this site accommodates a maximum of up, up to thirty vendors approximately. And as you can tell, their car is parked in the middle of the street right now. There's twenty three parking stalls right now and they're all meters. So, in order to have the farmer's market from three to seven, we're gonna have to close off the street. So the applicant proposed to close off the street from, at one o'clock, so then all cars that are parked there can get their full two hours for their meter and then they can leave before the farmer's market starts at three. Um, and then the street would remain closed until eight o'clock, so the parket would have an hour to uh, take, get rid of their tents and bring it back to the public driveways they also wanna see before they get rid of, of the barriers as well. They're gonna block the street with barriers which are approved from our public works department and they'll keep them the whole year long and they'll give them back when they're done. A note about this conditional use is that conditional uses don't have a sunset period, you can add one if you want to. So if you approve this conditional use, it'll last forever. Um, you can put a limit on that time if you want to and you can also add, you know, checkup points if you wanna come back in a year to see how last, this year's market went, you can do that as well. And, alright, so there's a couple of criteria we wanna take a look at when we're addressing this conditional use. The first is chapter seventeen thirty four, which is our mixed use downtown zoning designation. This site is within the M U D zoning designation, which permits um, farmer's markets after six P M and on weekends. If it's not after six P M or on weekends, then a conditional use is required. And since this one is from three to seven, that's this conditional use application. If they wanted to come back anywhere within the mixed use downtown zoning designation and have one, you know, stay on the weekends or after six, then they wouldn't need a conditional use, they could just do it outright as a permitted use. For the conditional use criteria, there's twelve conference, there's twelve conditional use criteria that apply. Most of them have to do with compatibility and with assuring compliance with our Oregon City Conference of Plan. The city believes that this application is compatible because the use of selling items is permitted downtown as retail sales. And they're not actually constructing any permanent facilities, they're just gonna have pop-up tents and things like that and then it'll go away before the street's open back up at eight P M. Um, and then we believe that meets our conditional use, or our Conference of Plan criteria because it's bringing activities to our downtown district, it's bringing a different type of service that's not offered downtown currently. Vendors grocery stores quite a bit of ways. Um, and it's bringing more economic opportunities as well. So with this, staff would recommend the planning commission approve conditional use file CU ten O two with the following four conditions of approval. The first one is just that they get some sort of lease agreement, so this is where they're using that gravel parking lot and they're gonna use our parking lot as well, so that we get some sort of maintenance agreement in there as well. The next is that they obtain right-of-way permits, that, which is something that they're intending on doing anyway. That would be obtained through our development services division. The third is that they receive approval for all signage. From my understanding, they're proposing to put a banner up at two thirteen in Washington um, and then their signage during the market will be A frames, that'll have to be approved by our public works director and city engineer. And then last is that they construct the development as proposed with the attached conditions of approval. You notice the hash mark in there, um, I'd like to do it in S D O nine or four, that was a typo. Um, at this time, I'd like to enter two items into the record, they're both from the applicant. The first is a memorandum identifying the specific types of vendors, so that would be entered into the record as exhibit A. The second is memorandum from the applicant uh, regarding the use of those additional two parking lots for the staging area and then for customer parking. With that, do you have any questions I can answer for you?
No. Chris.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess the first one that strikes me. So, we're gonna close down, how many, how many parking spots are we taking away?
Twenty-three.
We're taking away twenty-three and, and obviously those are pretty much filled, do we know they're filled all day long typically?
Hmm, I was looking through some of the aerial photos, which are just taken one day a year and that's about representative. I'm sure depending on time of day, you know, most of them do get filled up. We do.
Well, that's better than how you should get.
Yeah, that's probably been the good side of things. Um, people do park downtown, yeah, yeah.
So, have we had any concerns raised, so that's one of my concerns, I guess, is giving up those twenty-three spots and we're also in addition, and then my next question is how many more trips or cars do we anticipate that the market will bring in? And it looked like they tried to, they didn't give a number, but they addressed at least that the bulk of, of the folks they think will be coming in at four thirty to five o'clock and on range. Do we have any predictions or thoughts of what's the traffic going to look like that we're, we're, we want to come downtown?
Now, that's a good question. Uh, we sent this application to John Reflinger of Reflinger and Associates, who's a city transportation engineer consultant. And there was actually a winter market last year and so he used that sort of data to, to ascertain that there wouldn't really be a big impact on traffic here. Most of the people will be, you know, if they're coming earlier in the day, they might be leaving work and walking on foot or something like that. Um, and then after five o'clock, a lot of the parking really does clear out, so.
And could, if we maybe even add a condition about the employees to the market, obviously need to park somewhere, but if we're gonna, we're going to have to prioritize parking and if it is for customers and, and everybody else using Main Street, could we not, could we condition that the employees actually, minds identify where or say not to park in the vicinity or something to that effect?
Yeah, the applicant proposed that the vendors would park in that gravel parking lot on twelfth and main, but they didn't necessarily say all employees of the market, so you couldn't add a condition approval to say all employees of the market will be in that gravel.
And then it would be upon them to, and force through, you know, through the lease agreement with the vendors, that the vendors make sure that their employees are not parking, because that's a pretty long chain of command, but it's something that we need to, it's gonna be tight down there if we do in fact approve this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can certainly do that.
And then just in general, this is gonna cause the disruption of parking, eh, just downtown, do we have a communication plan or thought process around how we're gonna talk to other businesses, patrons of the other businesses, them business owners about where they should park, what they can expect?
Yeah, and the applicant can talk about that a little bit as well. Um, they have already, they're working with Main Street Oregon City. Um, and they're gonna help them send out emails the day before the market, just to let them know that it's coming up the next day. We've also gone around on site to ask some of the neighbors if there's anything that, you know, they could think of that would make this go a lot smoother. And in their application, they proposed to go back after the market started to again talk to the neighbors and see if there's any problems that they can fix or anything that comes up, just to minimize that impact. Um, if you want to, you can always uh, you know, require that next year they come back for a checkup sort of thing to make sure that their impact is okay. Or they've installed a pretty good plan of keeping involved with those neighbors and really getting that feedback and addressing the problems reported.
And in this case, neighbors being the business owners?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, clarify.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I guess my last question, really not related to parking, though, may be even more precarious. How do we remove a, a conditional use permit once we grant it, without, if we don't put a sunset clause in there? It's never, you can't remove, the city council can do it?
It's a conditional use permit, it's like a church or a school, it's.
See, that'd be.
As long as it stays.
Zoned or.
Well, as long as it stays, what, it's, it's what it will, it's like, what was approved, it's the same intensity and the same, um, you know, area and it continues, it's like any other, even if it's a non-conformant, you know, let's say we change the zone and we appropriate it to market. Right, we can't, we don't allow farmer's markets in this zone, then it becomes a non-conformant use. And it can continue. So you get any other non-conformant use.
Okay. So my concern though, that this is, is, or you're taking up a public right of, to grant that, I mean, without, without a sunset clause, maybe this is more directed to the commissioner. Without a sunset clause, we're giving up a pretty big right to that public right of way. Uh, is that, that sounds like what you're saying.
Well, the city has authorized the farmer's market to use the right of way. And that's a separate arrangement that the farmer's market has with the city that doesn't have anything to do with the land use approval. For health and safety reasons, the city could go and close the farmer's market if it needed, sure, because the city owns the land.
But for a land use issue, it would just totally clog that downtown parking, all other things, those types of issues, we, it would be difficult for us to renew the additional use permit, is that, without a sunset clause, is that correct?
Well, I think, you know, I think it, what, I don't know what the arrangement is with the market and the city on use of the street. Do you know Laura?
They haven't obtained a right-of-way permit yet.
Okay, uh, I guess that's, I've.
So, so if they retain a right-of-way permit, then they have the permission to use the right-of-way and I assume that that permission could be revoked, it is a license, I assume, that could be revoked in the event of a health and safety concern that the city would have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think if there were a concern that the fire trucks didn't get through and those sorts of things, then the.
I, I, that high level, gotcha, thank you. That's all I have for that.
Other questions? I have a question to follow on that, Chris was talking about, has uh, the applicant uh, surveyed the businesses in the downtown area to determine that this is something that is supported by the uh, you know, the businesses that are there?
From my understanding, they have, uh, Jackie can talk about it.
All right, well, they've, they've, they've asked them up, so I think we should probably, you know, they, they have done some outreach and I think that's a good, or a question the applicant can probably address a little better than staff can.
I, I share Chris's concern about the parking and, and traffic patterns, I think that's probably the, the major concern that I have. I think everything else uh, sounds very reasonable in their application. And it's really just a question of uh, whether or not the existing parking can absorb losing twenty-three spaces for that period of time. As, as I understand it, we're only talking about uh, really a deviation from what's allowed outright of three hours.
If they wanted to do it after six P M and go later at night, then they would not need a conditional use.
That, that's really the deviation we're talking about, is from three o'clock to six o'clock is, is allowing them to.
Well, at one o'clock, right, and they not close the street down at one?
They would close it at one.
Yeah, it, that's my initial thought, but then I read more, is they close the street at one, effectively close for a half day.
But as, as she explained it, they would still allow people to continue to park there until three.
Um, so the barriers would be placed up at one o'clock, so then if I just parked there at one o'clock and the meters are two hours, I could stay my full two hours and then I could leave thereafter.
The street would be blocked at one.
Yeah.
And there would be permanent signage um, placed on the meters as well. That would let them know year-round, there's the market from May till October and these are the hours of operation. So it'd be kind of ingrained when it's gonna happen. And so there'd be a level of expectation that to park there.
All right.
Okay. Okay, thank you Laura.
Thank you.
And next we'll um, ask for the applicant's presentation.
You know what I should ask for, they said without a, a variance or a conditional use, it can be done from three on?
It's six, it's an outright.
You can close the street down without.
But no, you can do, you can do a farmer's market in the mixed use downtown zone after six P M on the weekdays and on the weekend at any time.
Okay.
The issue of closing a public street is just like a parade or any other permit that you need to get through our public works department for use of a right-of-way. Okay, so that's really a separate issue that's regulated.
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you.
If public works doesn't give them a right-of-way permit, you can't put farmer's market on that.
Good evening. Um, I picked up the uh.
This uh, your use is healthy, the city you live in.
Thank you very much, I'm Market Manager, Oregon City, um, I'm the applicant and uh, on behalf of the market. I just wanted to note that when I did pick up the um, signs, the parking signs that gonna, that are gonna be affixed, um, it did say noon to eight, that the street would be closed. And I think that was something that came from public wo, um, code enforcement. Decided that it really should perhaps be closed off at noon to give time for any cars that needed to be removed to be removed. So just wanted to draw your attention to that. Um, so I don't know, do you have any questions? Cause I have lots of answers.
I guess that first, right, my question, because when you said one, I thought did, because the lunch hour of business, you know, people are coming down there at noon.
Well, that was one of, one, one of the concerns that code enforcement had, I guess, at some point was that um, if people drive down there, then they, they need to know, they don't want people to drive down at twelve thirty and go off and have a nice long lunch and come back and not see the sign, it, it's better to be earlier than later. I think that's what you figured.
So would it be the case that the signs say the street would be closed from noon to six?
It said noon to eight.
Noon to eight.
Just to remind people, yeah.
But the road would actually be closed at one?
Yeah, they, they have to go if they put, they post, I mean, just, even if you're gonna not confuse folks. At what, are these signs are already printed?
Yes.
Do we know how many or at what cost and how easily they could be changed?
I, I, with the market's paying for them, so we, we're all sensitively paying for them right now. But, you know, we pick them up Friday, I think.
Okay. I, I, I would not probably be inclined to close it at noon. Uh, I would really be, and I'd like to hear maybe from some of the business owners, but my inclination is that they don't want folks, they want folks coming down there to eat at noon and able to and not.
And there, there's a lot of parking, I mean, there's a lot of streets down there with a lot of parking on them, this is just one sort of small side street. Um, you know, uh, and um, right now, the uh, you know, I mean, I don't, if you have any other questions about the parking, but I mean, there are many other side streets that people can park on. There's um, the front usually on ninety-nine and then there's Main Street.
Having lived here my whole life, very familiar with the parking on Main Street, it's a huge issue. It's a huge issue and one of the biggest issues that we hear about, when we talk about this area, so I guess just to simply say, well, there's other streets. Eh, eh, in my question to why noon, I don't know that I'd go there, um. And like I said, I'd like to hear, I guess, back more of the business community if I may, if they're not, if they're okay with the noon closing, then I, you know, that's their business, so.
And I guess, you know, uh, I'd like to give some deference to code enforcement, our public works department. Um, and they have quite a bit of experience with trying to manage parking out there when you do have to close streets. Um, um. Once again, looking at it, and there's two different permits going on here and with public works managing that street, um, you know, they could put up a closure sign a, a little bit earlier if the intent, if the intention is to give folks enough leeway that we don't have to, you know, that we're not bumping up against that three o'clock start. Um, you know, cause technically you park there at twelve fifty-five, you know, uh, you're gonna run in, you're gonna run into some issues on the parking side. You know, I.
And that all hour meters?
Yes, um, you know, I think it might be, you know, we could certainly put a, a condition on here that we revisit. Um, you know, in a year, or if you wanna do that sooner, we certainly could. Um, you know, at, at this point, with that direction coming from, from code enforcement, I think maybe, you know, we might wanna try that and see how it works and see if we do get feedback, cause we haven't received any comments.
Okay.
Or concerns.
Or could I, I throw a little caveat to that, and then we've already stated that they're really expecting the bulk of people to start at four thirty. Uh, maybe we push the start time back to four instead of three. Uh, and you save the businesses downtown opportunity for lunch hour, you're, and you're still hit the bulk of the folks that you admittedly say don't come till four thirty. Uh, but I think maybe would be another option to look at.
That's certainly an option and I guess, once again, no, we haven't received any comments or concerns yet. Um, you know, uh, it'd be nice to see it work, you know, you also remember, this is going to be a benefit for those businesses.
Oh, I absolutely agree with that, and I don't think that I'm coming to find all the negatives to blow this out of the water, but I am trying to think pragmatic about how we're gonna implement this so that it is a win-win for everybody because, because some slight screw-ups in the beginning often are what fo, drive folks away for good. I mean, you guys probably are all aware about that situation, so that's why I'm trying to avoid to begin, to plan it appropriately.
I, I've had many conversations with um, Mr. Bush of Bush's Home Furniture, he has absolutely no um, worries about the parking. He said um, he's really, really looking forward to the market being there and starting and it's gonna be starting. He's um, not worried at all about the parking, he said there will be, people will find places. Um, and I can assure you that the market is doing, will do its best through outreach in many avenues to reinforce the message that market goers, the customers, if they're driving into this community, this area, um, really think about carpooling, about park and ride at the E O T. And I'm working with code enforcement to make the market a published in their brochure stop on a Wednesday so people can drive down, like a family can come into Oregon City or drive up in the hill, come down, park at the E O T and get on the trolley, the trolley will bring them in, stop, they'll get off and shop and then the trolley will pick them up later and take them back to the E O T. So there's a park and ride program, there'll be a carpooling program. Um, I spoke with the mayor over the weekend, she said she's um, finding the resources to keep the, the municipal elevator open so people can park up on the bluff or people can walk from the, the Gofflin neighborhood and use the elevator. Um, so I think there's, there's many resources, multiple resources, the market's gonna implement to alleviate the um, the impression or, or the uh, you know, concerns that people might have of, of extra customers coming into this area and parking. Ultimately, initially, three to four, they're looking at customers from local businesses, people who work on Main Street, who work in the courthouse, who can walk down from the McGofflin district. Um, and we foresee that uh, as, as we stated earlier, probably around four thirty, five o'clock, um, then you might begin to see more of the bulk of the customers coming down, because like you, I've lived here for not all my life, but twenty years of my life, and I think anyone who's lived in this city for any amount of times gonna realize that there's a constraint on parking and will exercise common sense and the local population will probably leave it till four thirty, five o'clock to come down. Um, but the others who want. Um, but the others who want to come earlier then will, will implement the park and ride, will impress on them carpooling and walking and biking. So we're gonna do our best to alleviate the pressure of extra parking down there.
Uh, you raised a question I actually missed asking also was about the elevator. Do you know the, uh, Tony or anybody, the likelihood of getting the elevator hours extended?
I don't at this time.
The last.
Been discussing it quite a bit.
Yeah, man.
Oh terrific. Uh, somebody reported it, it's on the work session tomorrow.
Well, you mentioned that we could, uh, put a condition on the approval, that this could be reviewed, uh, perhaps, uh, next year or sometime between now and then and at that time would determine whether, uh, that, uh, program was, uh, working successfully.
Yes. If we don't put as, uh, as you're towards, as you're stating, you know, if you, if you approve a conditional use permit, as long as you're doing what that conditional use permit says, you can continue to do it, you know, conditional permits for schools or, um, any other, cell towers, any other conditional use that we approve. Um, and then you do have the ability to say we wanna revisit this in, you know, a year, five years, whatever you decide that is prudent, so.
I don't have any questions.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll take, um, public testimony from, um, others in the audience in support of the application. I have, um, two comment cards, uh, the first from, uh, Don Slack. So introduce yourself and the city you live in, please.
My name is Don Slack and I live in Oregon City. Uh, I'm the president of Main Street Oregon City and some of the questions that, uh, actually my board in our meeting today asked them to come down and relay or, um, provide their support for, um, the farmer's market downtown. To answer some questions about what the business downtown feel. Uh, I mean, most of the business, and, and by the way, I mean, I'm sure we can find some folks who will have problems with the parking problems or with what's happened. But the bulk of the, of the businesses in Main Street Oregon City have been asking, why has this happened yet? I mean, there is really a great anticipation for the market coming. And, uh, in fact, we got a taste of it last winter on the weekends. And it was, you know, one of the main things that we're trying to do in Main Street Oregon City is to bring people back downtown. Um, you know, and if you've been to First Friday, which I hope you will, which is our art thing on Friday nights, you know, we had an incredible one Friday night, but, I mean, those were all in addition to having a market like we would have in the farmer's market, it's the whole idea of bringing people back downtown. Have people socializing, have people interacting in our, in our downtown area. And we see this as a real potential asset and, uh, and, uh, opportunity to, to begin in doing that. And, um, so, and we look forward to the evening market in the summer and, and some of the, uh, weekend markets, uh, later in the year, so. I think if you walk downtown and start asking about yay or nay, you would get, uh, a high percentage of yay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a, um, uh, uh, another comment from Denise McGriff, this is, uh, in favor or still going in favor, correct?
Yeah.
I don't think you have commenters in rows so much that it makes much difference.
Well, I was, I was trying to interpret the form.
There's no box on the form anymore, the old comment cards used to have, are you opposed to the project, are you in favor of the project, that's missing from the new.
Yeah.
Signing form. Good evening.
introduce yourself.
I'm Denise McGriff and I live in Oregon City and I'm here tonight representing the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association is, uh, reviewed this particular request at their meeting last week. And I want to just say on our behalf that we support the, uh, having the farmer's market downtown on Wednesdays. And the reason that we do, which is I was waiting for Commissioner Groner to start talking about this, is that this particular application does meet the criteria for a conditional use permit, which is basically what you guys are gonna be reviewing and talking about. And I think in particular, if you, uh, if you've all read this and obviously have it committed to memory, that it, of course you do.
That's right.
Absolutely, uh, that I think that really the way that this has been laid out and the way that it meets the goals and of the comprehensive plan in particular, I wanted to call your attention to, because I think we're looking at the city's economic health, we're looking at retail service, we're looking at tourism. And I even go as far as say that this meets the historic preservation goals, because as many we know, this was the site of the original market and I think it's really terrific that we have been fortunate enough to get this back downtown. I went, I myself attended both of the markets, uh, this winter and, uh, just put on a little extra clothing, but, uh, I got some great stuff. Uh, again, just because it was a winter time, there wasn't the, the growth of people, but when I told people about it, uh, they, I think some of the people I talked to went down for the next weekend it was open. But I think this is a really good project and I think that the staff has done a great job in outlining, uh, how this meets the requirements. In looking at the conditions that staff has, uh, suggested, we don't have any objection to those either, I think those are all reasonable conditions. And, uh, I would also like to say that, that I think that if you, if you want to, I would, I would strongly recommend that, uh, from a planning standpoint, that you put a condition for review. I've been involved in several other conditional use permits and one in particular, we have with a church up on John Q Adams, we have a yearly review. Because it does have, uh, this particular business or uses in the middle of a residential neighborhood, not like this, but it has a substantial effect on parking. And I think we've been very successful through a good neighbor agreement with this particular organization to have a periodic review. And I think we're going on year three and we have only had like one little tiny problem, so I, I think, uh, your legal advice is correct in saying if you want to do that, you can, but I would just caution that we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. In fact, this is a big thing and I think that people, uh, there may be some grousing about parking, but I think that all in all, this is gonna do more good than it is harm. Usually if you know that particular, uh, area, the, the people that are, are parked there are not necessarily going to those businesses that are quite adjacent, they're parking there and going elsewhere. In the morning, of course, I see that area, uh, on a fairly regular basis and, and ninety-nine point nine percent of people who are parking there are jurors. You may have, you know, that may be an issue, but the city's been dealing with that issue for as long as I've lived here. And they're trying to get the jurors to park down in the lot and then, you know, shuttle them up because they really shouldn't be parking in front of the courthouse unless they have an A D A issue. So as a conclusion, I would just like to say that we have a letter, a letter of support and I'll, um, hand that up to you, uh, Paul, you can look at that and, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Put that to the record as it is at seat.
Any questions for Ms. McGriff? Nope?
No.
Um, next we'll, um, ask for comments or questions from, uh, interested parties, neither, um, oppose or in favor of the application and, uh, followed by testimony from anyone opposed to the application. Seeing none, um, we'll, uh, open the floor for, uh, discussion among the commissioners.
I guess the only other thing would be.
Tony?
If, uh, the applicant would like to rebut, if she'd like to come up and.
I'm sorry, yeah, it's, it's, we would give, um, the applicant an opportunity to rebut any of the, uh.
I'm not sure that rebuttal is appropriate since there was no opposition testimony, but if, if you have something else you'd like to say.
Here.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on something that Denise McGriff said, which is so true. Um, yes, there may be a little grousing about the parking and yes, it is far from ideal, this situation with the parking, but the overall positive effect on the community is immeasurable. And, um, from a food security point of view, from, uh, being able to bring fresh, healthy foods to the low income that can now use public transit to come in, um, you know, it, it, I could go on and on and I sort of stated it in the, um, outline that you were presented with, but I can really see that there is so much, um, good gonna come of this project that, um, that, that the effect on the parking, I think, will be mitigated hugely, so. I don't know if you have any other questions, but I could talk all night about the market.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Alright, so we'll close the public testimony portion of this hearing, take it up for you to also deliberate.
Okay, so we'll close, um, the public hearing and, um, open, uh, the floor for discussion.
Uh, so I guess couple, the direction I'm going with my thoughts would be to propose, um, one new, uh, condition of approval and maybe just a language change to the first one already written. Uh, addressing the lease agreement with the city and, and the market and that. We could get some language in there for the, the market employees from parking down there or, and and that was my next question and, and that to include the vendors, the employees of the vendors. So that they are, they know that they're not to be parking downtown, they need to park elsewhere and walk down or whatever. That would be my, and I'm not sure how we would word that, Carrie. Um, so I guess we could say a prohibition of market employees and market and vendor employee, associated vendors.
No, as I understood it, the vendors have their own, um, designated parking, is that not true?
The gravel parking lot as well.
Yeah, whether they use it and whether it's in fourth, I mean, that, I'd like to put it as a condition so that it's explicitly said within the lease agreement that you, you guys need to be parking down there so that folks can come enjoy your market. Sometimes, you know, when it's, when it's you and I, believe you won't park down there, but when you have twenty to thirty vendors with one to three to, I don't know the size of the, how many employees, now you're talking about managing arguably another thirty car trips down there or something, so if we can get it within the, in the lease agreement to make sure that they know they need to be parking elsewhere down there for available, and then last, I, I'd like to propose a new condition, um, this is sunset clause, subject to a full reviewing twelve months.
Maybe what you might wanna do is do it in no more than twelve months, allowing the market to come back in the winter, maybe when it's, you know, they don't wanna feed butt up against May, they wanna come back.
Sure, sure.
In November, December, January.
Or, or would it two year, well.
I mean, I hear a possibility, no more than twelve months so that they have some flexibility.
Or if we say prior to next May.
Sure, however, I think that's what you say. No more than or prior to, I think are the same, that'd be the same language, right? Okay, uh, that's my.
And just to clarify, we would do that as an administrative, um, we wouldn't expect them to submit another conditional use permit, uh, application. Um, we would put it on a planning commission hearing, um, do it under, uh, we, we, we do an administrative review of the application and the conditions of approval that are in place to, to see if they're demonstrating, or they're complying with those conditions of approval. And then if other issues come up, we can discuss those, but we wouldn't be expecting them to submit another conditional use application.
Well, that, here lies my question though. Is the bar still, Carrie, the high bar of emergency access and those that we would have to, to submit as evidence for, to be removed? Because it is already approved without setting it so that it, it actually ends, that, that's my question. Does that make sense?
Okay, are you concerned about emergency access?
No, I'm concerned that there are other issues that creep up that were not legally allowed, that this community isn't say legally allowed to, to take in as evidence to remove this conditional use permit if we don't set it to expire in one year, as Tony suggested, kind of just come back for review.
It's expired.
Well, if it expired, I know it's done, if it doesn't expire and they just have to come back and give us an update, then we still have that same bar that it's ultimately difficult to remove. And that's my question.
What is the language of the condition that you guys use for review?
Um, reading off codes, such reviews will be accomplished with an administrative action under chapter seventeen fifty should limited to the question of whether additional conditions should be imposed on a condition of use in the light of changing circumstances and more efficient implementation of the city's compliance.
I think that's good enough, that's fine.
So that will allow imposing additional conditions.
Thank you, that's exactly what I needed to handle the actual language, thank you. So, so just the review within a year, I would be glad with.
I agree.
So condition of approval number five would be that, um.
Subject to full review within.
We would conduct an administrative review of this, uh, conditional use application prior to May of two thousand eleven. Okay, I can do it. Another question, um, is the lease agreement in appropriate place to, um, to require, uh, the farmer's market to, um, have vendors park at a specific location?
There's a lease agreement, I think there's a condition, isn't there?
Right, I mean, it might, it might be cleaner to just put a condition number six that says.
Okay, I would, I think to flow with the first condition that speaks to the lease agreement and parking within.
In, in a sense, the application proposes vendor parking at a certain location, so you don't need to condition it because that's what the applicant proposes. It's like if I propose a three-story building, I'm not gonna build a six-story building, right? I mean, you don't have to condition me to build a three-story building because I've proposed one. But I think we can draft a condition that says the applicant shall ensure that, uh, vendors and employees of vendors shall park at the city's lot.
That's sufficient with the understanding that if, you know, it fills, they would park elsewhere.
Sure.
Alright, that's fine.
You know, that would be a nice problem to have, we'll deal with that come one year. That's right.
So, um, we're, we're all, all employee, all employee, uh, parking and then, all employee and vendor parking, um, shall take, shall, um, occur in the staging area at twelve, in Main Street. Works for me.
Yes. Um, any other discussion?
I agree.
So we're, um, open for an answer?
So I'll move, uh, to, uh, accept the proposed application has amended with the two conditions of approval, as we have Tony already been back. Well, you know exactly what we're, oh, do you know?
You have one, you know?
Condition of approval number five, um, is that the applicant shall receive administrative review of conditional use, C U. Ten O two and no more than twelve, and no more, and prior to May of two thousand and eleven. Condition of approval number six, all market employee, market and employees of vendors shall park in the staging area at Copland Main Street if possible.
So.
I'll accept that. Um, Tony Caldwell or Laura?
Caldwell. I got it. Commissioner Groner.
Hi.
Commissioner Kidlo.
Yes.
I'm first name.
Hi.
If he passes three zero. Right.
So, um, thank you, I was just gonna give a little bit of update on what we've been doing in community development. Um, at your next hearing on, uh, May twenty-fourth, we'll be hearing a conditional use permit and a site plan designer review application for, um, additions to the Atkinson Church. Um, a little bit of history on this is that the Historic Review Board did request the approval us for the demolition of one of the existing buildings on, on the house on the site. And then, uh, reviewed the addition for compatibility with the Historic Review Board design criteria. Um, that decision was appealed to the city commission. And the city commission did remand it back to the Historic Review Board for, uh, one of the approval, uh, criteria for some additional review of materials that are being used, uh, so we'll kind of have two landing subpoenas going out at the same time there. Um, but, so right now we are scheduled for, uh, a hearing, uh, at your next meeting on May twenty-fourth for that Atkinson Church. Um, the Carnegie Building, uh, is being proposed as the temporary library, as we are losing our lease up at the Danielson's facility. Uh, that did go up for public comment, uh, the public commented last week, that is a type-two decision for a change in use, uh, for the library to be located at that facility. Uh, we did not.
We did not receive any comments on that proposed change in use, so we'll probably be issuing a decision in the near future.
It's a temporary, you said temporary, but... As if I remember correctly.
It is temporary. The city commission did approve the tentative purchase agreement for Eastham. Oh, so that's, so these go back before the school board to see if they'll approve that sales agreement. That purchase price is $4 million with, I think it's over a 20-year timeline where we would be making payments to this little district. That application before we can move into Eastham, Eastham's currently zoned R6, it has a conditional use permit for a school on it. We most likely be taking it through land use process with a, you know, it's still tentative. We did hold a pre-up with the library. Most likely looking at a comprehensive plan amendment and a zone change to an institutional use, which allows libraries outright. Then we would be getting into most likely a concept master plan. Buildings upwards of 60,000 square feet, they're probably only going to be using less than 20,000 square feet in phase one. So that will be something that you'll be seeing hopefully in the, hopefully in the near future. It's going to be a couple of months before we can get everything done.
Always in residential?
We, Oregon City didn't have... We didn't have a public facilities or institutional zone until 2004. So all of our, all of our schools are condition uses on residentially zoned property.
That's funny.
Yep. South Fork Water Board up in Park Place will be coming in probably in the next two months with an application for a master plan for a 15, 20-year build out of their site and improvements to their facility. Will most likely be water infrastructure related. Not a whole lot of new fancy buildings up there, but just trying to deal with projections for future growth and providing adequate water for playing in that area. We did also just recently close the comment period. Some of the older commissioners may remember the application on Fair Road for a subdivision.
That was... Normally denied.
That was denied. Yep, so they are coming in with just a straight subdivision in the R3.5 zones. So that public comment did end and we'll probably issue a decision in the near future on that one as well. Off the top of my head, I think somewhere between like 66 lots.
That doesn't have a forest, correct?
Does not have a forest.
Does not.
It does not. It's a type two decision since it is just a straight subdivision.
I do know the forest was an issue.
Yes, it was. You will also be seeing in the near future, as we've been making you aware of some of the improvements, the jug handle project at 213 in Washington and 205 for the redesign of that intersection to improve capacity. Approximately $22 million project of which we hope there's some federal funding for. Looking pretty good, like we will get, we'll get that funding. So we are moving forward with additional construction documents on that project. With the relocation of the road underneath 213, there are some existing wetlands in that area that we're going to have to deal with. So the natural resource overlay district is going to come before the planning commission for their review because of the impacts and some of the alternative mitigation standards that they're approving. The staff can approve that type two decision. We brought the code amendments, the six-month code amendments that ended up at planning commission. They've been up at city commission, they've somewhat been delayed, but we did hold a work session last month and then we held another hearing last week. We think we've got it down to about six items that we're going to bring back at the June 2nd city commission meeting. At the last hearing in front of the city commission, they did talk about membrane structures and we inserted some language with the direction of the commission concerning metal membrane structures to be included in that definition. So we discussed that. That language has remained in the definition. We've also, we're continuously working with the state and our building official concerning our flood management overlay district. And so our building official went to a conference with the state on implementation of development floodplain and floodplains. And the state flood management coordinator had a look at our code and recommended a couple of small changes, really dealing with buildings themselves and where crawl spaces are located relative to the floodplain. So they are very minor changes. So we are going to bring those code proposed amendments to the city commission. We briefly outlined them in form, but then we're just going to insert them at this point. And then we also realize when we were looking at our geologic hazards code, which deals with development on steep slope areas, that we reference a Oregon City geologic hazards map, steep slopes map, but we never adopted the map. So we are adopting that map, which will use the LiDAR data, the Digami, the Digami map for slumps, landslides, historic landslides and whatnot. So we've put that into one map and we're going to adopt that as the geologic hazards overlay map. And then we're also, where applicable section references the map. But then we moved the definitions when we went through and made updates. We had definitions in every chapter of the code, so we put them all into the definitions section. And when we did that, we didn't reference back to the definition of geological hazard area, which identifies, you know, slopes over 25%, those on the Digami map. So we're just adding one more line when required. So it's a very, very minor change. Some more significant changes are going to be, we're moving forward with trying to craft some code language that deals with landscaping and tree retention, preservation or planting for new single-family homes. So we've lifted codes from Grants Pass and Portland and we're proposing to implement some minimum landscaping requirements for new homes. Or right now, we're proposing conditions more than 20%, which would include, I think right now, we're looking at, you know, landscaping the front yard to a certain percentage for two inches caliper tree preserve for every thousand square foot of lot size. So, or you need to put a, you know, if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, you'd have to put a 10 inches worth of trees on the site. So those are some things we're working through right now that we hope to have ready to bring back to them on June 2nd hearing. And then we've also had a request to look at further dialogues, consultation and potentially noticing with Native American tribes that had a presence in Oregon City. So we're doing quite a bit of research on trying to identify who the liaisons should be.
Do you have to know the file or the code change?
No, for, the proposal is that for all land use applications and pre-ups in the city, that they'd be notified for formal comment. So we are putting together what we think is a good place to start in terms of starting to build those relationships and how we would move forward with notification. For those... Not since I've been here, no.
Are there existing entities that you'd be working with?
I think that there's further discussion needed with the commission because we've been utilizing the state historic preservation office and CIS. They're the, they're the state's contact with the tribes. And then they identify at the state level certain tribes and who their contact should be. And that's what we originally proposed and brought forward and there was some concern that, you know, there's, the dialogue between tribes and these state agencies may not be the best and that maybe the city should be directing them directly. So we've heard those, those concerns raised and we're trying to formulate how to move forward and the intent of what the commission would like to see. So those are the major changes with the code. So I think we've got it down to about five items. Some of them are pretty straightforward. I think one, one or two, I think a little additional work, but we're definitely close to getting that, getting that wrapped up. I guess the last thing would be, we brought the community development department budget through the budget hearing process. We had budget hearings, we've made up other commissioners and the public. We did get through it all in one night. So community development makes up planning and building. Our budget was approved as submitted. We're not proposing to replace my position at this time. So we would just maintain with the planners we have on staff, but we would be looking to split 50/50 with the building department and planning department, some entry-level administrative assistance at that front counter for the phones and copying and everything else that, you know, planners or plans examiners pick up, since we do not have any assistance down at our office at 221 law. So other than that, I don't have anything else to add unless you have questions you'd like me to try and answer.
Question about the transportation system plan, I think there was a grant request...
Correct.
That we had voted on. Was this size of that?
I haven't heard yet. So yeah, we did apply for a TGM grant to help us with our transportation system plan update. I can have for you, I won't be here for the May 24th hearing, but I will make a note to see if I can get a timeline for when they hope to issue, who received those grants.
I was just curious about whether or not that transportation system plan included bicycle paths, trails and other multimodal transportation needs.
Yes.
So all of that's included?
Yeah, we're starting to see a shift in how we look at TSPs and, you know, how we're going to move forward as a region. This is a discussion going on at Metro right now as we're doing the regional transportation plan update. Historically, we use a level of service standard when the state use a vehicle over capacity ratio. If your intersection's full, it's a one and there's no capacity left. And we're starting to try and look at other forms of transportation and how we can start bolstering those to try and help with some of our regional centers and whatnot. So yes, it is, it is on the TSP, it's in the TSP and it will be a...
I was specifically curious about the trails because I noticed in the work that Metro did, they had allocated funds for the region and Oregon cities' share is disproportionately low when it comes to funding interest, funding trail infrastructure. So I'm just hoping that we can at some point get ahead of that curve.
I'll see if I can find anything about that and how that was created. Anything else?
No.
Alright.
So meeting is done?
We are done.
Thank you.